It is ten minutes after seven. We will reconvene this meeting of the Waco ISD Board of Trustees. We've been in closed session under Section 551.074 of the Texas Open Meetings Act, and no action was taken. Everything that we are going to vote or discuss this evening is in accordance with state law. And with that, I want to extend a warm welcome to all of you who are here tonight. I can't tell you how gratifying it is to see a full-packed house, and we sincerely appreciate your interest and your support of the Waco Public Schools. And as I always remind folks, the board's purpose is to set goals, listen to reports of the superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or to solve the problems of individuals; as management, it's the sole responsibility of the superintendent and her staff. If you have a cellphone or electronic device with you this evening, if you would put that on silent or turn it off at this time, we would greatly appreciate it. And once again, welcome. Thank you for showing up this evening and being a part of this process. I also want to welcome anybody who's watching at home this evening on WISD-TV. And with that, we will move on to Item 5, which is a moment of silence where we'd ask that you join us as we pause for prayer, contemplation, reflection, or meditation. Thank you. When I move on to the item number six, Pledge of Allegiance. Dr. Kane.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, we're pleased to have two outstanding students from Provident Heights Elementary to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please welcome fifth graders Ronnie Ward and Anthony Lamonas Valenzuela.
So, wait. Please stand, salute the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent job. Board members, if you would join me in front of the dais for tonight's special recognition. As always, we begin tonight's special recognition ceremony by reintroducing our Pledge of Allegiance leaders. Ronnie Ward is a fifth grader at Provident Heights, the daughter of Michael and Cassandra Benz. This young lady loves to draw and read mystery novels. She also writes her own books. Ronnie has a dream of becoming a cartoon artist and a novelist. So, we will be able to say we knew her when. And Mr. Anthony Lamonas Valenzuela is a fifth-grade student, the son of Carmen Valenzuela and Geraldo Lamonas. He loves playing soccer and football. Anthony's favorite subject in school is math, and someday, he wants to work with and design video cameras. Ronnie and Anthony, we thank you again, and we hope you enjoy your new books provided by Barnes &amp; Noble Booksellers, a proud adopted school partner of Waco ISD. Thank you both. Each year, the Duke University Talent Identification Program searches for academically talented seventh graders throughout the United States. Once identified, these students are invited to take the SAT or the ACT college entrance exam alongside high school juniors and seniors. Tonight, we are pleased to honor Bridget Aikenberg, a seventh grader at the Atlas Academy. Because of Bridget's high scores on the SAT, she will be recognized at a special ceremony at Texas A&amp;M University and College Station on Friday, May 22. Bridget, who is also an avid softball player, is the daughter of Gretchen and Alex Aikenberg. And I would like to invite Gretchen and Alex to stand, so we can applaud. Oh, there. Gretchen. Earlier this month, both University and Waco High competed in the District 17 5A One Act Play Competition. The University High performed the comedy "The Imaginary Invalid." Waco High performed the Shakespeare tragedy "Macbeth." Although neither school advanced to bi-district, both returned home with prestigious individual awards. Tonight, we're pleased to honor those award-winning actors and technicians. From Waco High, honorable mention All-Star Cast Julia Hensley. All-Star Cast Garrett Mulholland. Waco High Theater Teacher Kalen Childress. Our honorees from University High are in costume tonight because in less than an hour from now, they will present an encore performance of "The Imaginary Invalid." Honorable mention All-Star Cast Jasmine Gaither, who plays the part of Angelique, the daughter of Argon. Romelo May, who plays the part of Argon's maid, All-Star Cast. And your 2015 Best Actor in District 17 5A, playing the part of Argon, the hypochondriac, And University High Theater Teacher Glenn Price. Congratulations again to our outstanding thesbians. The Waco ISD Education Foundation Surprise Patrol made its annual rounds last month to award $100,000 in classroom grants. The money is used to enhance the educational experience of thousands of Waco ISD students through creative classroom projects, field trips, academic competitions, and supplies that are not included in the regular budget. Grants are normally awarded to classroom teachers, but this year, for the first time in its history, the foundation awarded a grant that was written and submitted by a student. Molly Hep is a seventh grader in the Atlas Academy at Tennyson Middle School. She wrote and submitted a grant that will benefit students across the street at Parkdale Elementary. Funded by the Central National Bank, the $800 grant entitled "Reaching for Reading" will provide books and magazines for the Parkdale After School Program. The goal is to develop a love of reading and improve reading comprehension among Parkdale students. Thank you, Molly, for caring about your neighbors at Parkdale, and congratulations for becoming the first student to be awarded an Education Foundation Grant. Seven students from West Avenue Elementary recently returned from Dallas, where they competed in the state competition of Destination: Imagination. The students advanced to state after winning the coveted Showmanship Award at the Regional DI Meet last month. Destination: Imagination is an academic competition that gives students an opportunity to work creatively in teams to solve problems using science, technology, engineering, mathematics, community service, or the fine arts. West Avenue competed in a fine arts challenge entitled Fairy Tales. The students use their imagination to create an original fairy tale about a character who faces and deals with the phobia. Members of the West Avenue Destination: Imagination team are Dana Perez. The West Avenue Destination: Imagination coach is Valatia Evans. And a not very shy, but very proud Principal Joseph Alexander. Skills USA is a career tech student organization that serves thousands of high school students throughout the country. Back in the day, Skills USA was known as VICA, the Vocational Industrial Clubs of America. Today, Skills USA provides numerous competitions that allow students to showcase their skills in welding, building trades, health services, drafting, animation, forensic science, photography, architecture, and automotive technology. Tonight, we're pleased to recognize Waco ISD Skills USA State Contest Participants. From the Greater Waco Advanced Manufacturing Academy, in the Applications Welding category, In the Welding Technical Test category, from Crawford High School, Ronnie Lewis. In the Humanoid Robotics category, Brianna Rodriguez. From Waco High School, in the Automotive Technology category, Curtis Witt. Karan Hudlin. Roberto Acuna. In the Animation category, Micah Weaver. In the Health Science category, Jess Lee Morales. Yasenia Silva and Brianna Castaneda. In the Forensic Science category, Vanessa Torres. Carlos Piña. In the Architect Interior Design category, Ivan Rodriguez. Yvonne Gutierrez. Sierra Savano. Our USA Skill sponsors include Joe Rizzo, Fabian Lara, Brandon Allen, Charles Petrie, Floyd Smitty Smith, Mike Jones, Michelle Myers, Milton Campos, Rath Logan, Brandon Soccer Success 2015. 2015 marked another outstanding season for Waco ISD soccer teams. For the third straight year, three teams dominated district play and were forces to be reckoned with in the state playoffs. Tonight, we're pleased to honor their success, beginning with the bi-district champion Waco High Lady Line. Honorable mention All-District Blaine Williams. District 17 5A Defensive MVP Artheli Martinez. And Jess Lee Morales. Second Team All-District Lucia Alvarez. Second Team All-District Daniela Rodriguez. Second Team All-District Jasmine Petardo. Second Team All-District Allison Black. Second Team All-District Cassidy Steg. District 17 5A Newcomer of the Year Kaylee Abelis. And Maya Palacios. Assistant Principal Joe Bishop. And Head Coach Tim Walker. The Waco High Lines District 17 5A Champions, Bi-District Champions, Area Finalist Logan Jesus Ramirez. Alex Ramirez. Second Team All-District Jonathan Gonzalez. First Team All-District Josue Abara. Is he first-team super? Okay. First-team Super Syntax and District 17 5A MVP George Cerrio. First Team All-District Francisco Ramirez. District 17 5A Defensive MVP, First Team Super Syntax Alexis Aranaga. Second Team All-District Darian DeLara. Honorable mention All-District Zach Gibson. Second Team All-District Edwin Almarez. Raul Hernandez. Victor Alvarez. First Team All-District Omar Williams. Second Team All-District Eric Carroga. Louis Martinez. First Team All-District Super Syntax Newcomer of the Year Juan Arroyo. Arturo Palacios. Head Coach, Super Syntax Coach of the Year Chris Kahler. The University High Trojans 2015 Regional Quarterfinalist. Juan Rivera, honorable mention All-District. Honorable mention All-District Omar Gonzalez. Francisco Almandares. Second Team All-District Jose Zunaga. District 17 5A Newcomer of the Year Umberto Cruz. First Team All-District Caleb Ypez. Honorable mention All-District Omar Pargas. First Team All-District Chris Rivera. First Team All-District and First Team Super Syntax Michael Galvan. First Team All-District Giovanni Lopez. Irvin Casares. Second Team All-District Christian Abara. Second Team All-District Jose Garcia. District 17 5A Midfielder of the Year, First Team Super Syntax Eric Casares. Assistant Coaches Dominic Gutierrez. Larry Renfro. Kane Queros. Ricky Perez. And Head Coach Mike Chapman. There are three members of the soccer team who were on the 2013 State Championship Team. Giovanni Lopez, Michael Galvan, and Eric Casares. A big applause for all of our kids and their parents and their teachers and their coaches.
Thank you, Dr. Kane. Thank you for all the congratulations to all the folks we recognized this evening. Let's do the Audience for Guests portion next, and then a couple items, unless anybody objects, it will take out of order. On Audience for Guests, Pam Cooper from the American Federation of Teachers wanting to address Items 9, O, and P. Ms. Cooper, I have a statement I'm supposed to read. I'll make it short. You've got three minutes, and if we go over, we'll let you know. Otherwise...
Go over, you can scrape me up off the floor. I won't be here that long.
We do appreciate you coming out tonight, so whenever you're ready.
Okay, good evening. I'm Pam Cooper, Chair of the Greater Waco American Federation of Teachers, which we finally know as AFT. Good evening to Mr. Atkins, Superintendent, and the rest of the board. We're here tonight to request that you table Agenda Items O and P. This is in reference to the package of contracts proposed for approval tonight. Due to numerous calls with questions and complaints about contracts to our organization, we feel it would be advantageous for all concerned to be reconsidered. We would like to propose that an independent committee be established to investigate the contracts not being renewed on an individual basis. Many of the calls we have received have an issue with the "undecided" contracts. The threat of nonrenewal has forced teachers to resign, so they do not have a nonrenewal on their records. Teachers have voiced that their supervisors are welding this like a weapon. Due to this happening, many have resigned or plan to resign. An independent committee could investigate the causes and interview each of the personnel in question. Many of the people involved feel like they have been bullied, threatened, and ill-used. We ask this in the best interest of Waco ISD and their personnel. This would help project a better image of fairness in all of Waco ISD, and we thank you for your consideration, and we are here to support you as you are to support us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper. And I know Ms. Cooper's aware of this. I will tell folks who maybe this is your first board meeting. On the Audience for Guests portion, we can't interact unless they're addressing a posted agenda item, which she was. And so, I will let you know that, can't say anything about the process you've proposed, but Items O and P are going to be pulled this evening when we get to that part of the consent agenda. Before we get to the consent agenda, I have been asked to take a couple of items out of order. First, unless there's any objection, we'll drop down to Item 10B, which is the hiring of administrators. Is there any objection to doing so? Dr. Kane, you're up.
For those of you who watched last month, and we talked about the retirement of Dr. Bill Shepherd, I'm pleased to announce that Dr. Bill Shepherd will be the Principal of Cesar Chavez Middle School. I have all these things about Dr. Shepherd that everyone knows because he is just so well-loved and so highly thought of, and I would like to express my personal thanks to him for accepting the job at Chavez. We had a lot of teachers who were saying that they wanted to leave, and as soon as Dr. Shepherd's name was announced, we had some calls that said, "I've changed my mind." We have a lot of confidence in him, and he is an excellent administrator, and we're very happy that he's staying, and we can't wait for him to shepherdize, as we call it, Chavez. And we would like to read the name of a new Assistant Principal that I'm asking the board to hire. Suzanne Hamilton has been in education for eight years, all with WISD. Before moving into administration, she was a social worker through communities and schools at Lake Air Middle and Tennyson Middle. She enjoyed students at the middle level so much, she became a teacher and then served as an instructional specialist for math and science at Lake Air Intermediate. Later, she served as the behavioral specialist at University High School, and during the spring of the 2014 school year, she served as interim Assistant Principal at Indian Spring Middle School. She currently serves as the Waco ISD's Director of PEAMS and Counseling. She has a Master of Education in Principal Certification from Tarleton State and a Bachelor of Social.
and a Bachelor of Social Work in two thousand five from Mary Harden Baylor University. In her leisure time, she enjoys spending time with her family, especially her new grandson, Jacy. She especially enjoys traveling with her husband to watch basketball. Ms. Hamilton, please stand up. We can't congratulate you because I'm asking the board to take action, so, Mr. President, if you would do that, we would... Oh, yes. Well, she's kind of shy.
Okay, well, we're going to clap for you in just a second, I think, but we do need to take action on that one. Dr. Shepherd is a reassignment. You made that before he accepted his retirement. All right, then we'll accept the, I mean, a motion to accept the administration's recommendation with respect to an Assistant Principal at Indian Spring. No, at Cesar Chavez Middle School. We move, Mr. Pettis, second. Any questions, comments, discussion, all those in favor, say aye. Aye? Now you're on board. Congratulations. Motion carried. Thank you, Dr. Kane. We also have one presenter from out of town, and unless there's some objection, we'll take Item eleven C out of order, which is our report on our annual employee opinion survey satisfaction surveys. Any concern about taking that out of order? All right, then we will do so now.
Familiar face.
Bowman, thank you for making the trip up here this evening.
Oh, look at this. I have my technology immediately. This is exciting. Glad to be here. Nice to see you all. I feel like I have some really good news to share, and I know that this district has worked hard for some of the very positive things I want to share. I tried to put this together so it goes very quickly. We just get a quick summary of what the district has done this year as far as responses to the employee opinion survey. First of all, just background methodology, all Waco ISD employees were invited to participate in the survey. The survey was conducted by Tasby HR Services. The district didn't have any access whatsoever to any of the data. We at Tasby compiled the data and developed the report. The survey was taken both online, and for those employees that did not have access to a computer at work, they completed the survey on paper. It was sent to us. We did the data entry. Just a quick representation of who participated in the survey. Forty percent of the survey participants were teachers. Obviously, because they are, there is such a large group, they're going to have an influence on the overall responses that you see to the survey. Also, the largest single group of employees have worked for the district between four and nine years, although you can see just by looking at this pie chart that your employee distribution is pretty well-rounded based on tenure. Just a quick profile of the person who took the survey. It's an elementary school teacher with four to nine years' experience at Waco ISD. Probably nothing that you'd, I mean, similar to what you expected. Employees said that the most important thing to their job satisfaction was meaningful work. This is something that the district employees have said for several years now. This isn't a surprise. This is pretty much what the results were. As you can see, they're all in the, almost all in the ninety percent or very close to ninety percent category. Your employees feel that their work is meaningful and that on most days they feel very good about what they have accomplished.
Can you explain what the different color bars meant?
They're the different years, if, I'm sorry, I should have, I left that off the chart because it took up so much space. We started taking surveys in two thousand eleven, I believe it is, so the turquoise line on the bottom is two thousand eleven. The question about what have I accomplished, how I feel about what I've accomplished, we did not ask that in two thousand eleven. So the dark blue bar at the top is this year, the two thousand fifteen year. So top is the most recent that you're looking at. Compensation and benefits was also mentioned by more than fifty percent of employees as being important to their job satisfaction. Just to give you a peek at the questions related to compensation and benefit, benefits. And I'm going to, I'm going to touch on the pay a little bit more, I think. Yeah, I'm going to touch on the pay a little bit more, so I'm not going to go into that a lot right now. As you can see, there really isn't much of a difference from year to year, but I do want to point out one particular area here in the leave time provided to me is appropriate. Over the last three years, there has been a very positive trend, and the level of satisfaction has increased by ten percent among employees responding to the survey when it comes to the leave time that they have. You had a sixty-eight percent response rate. That's pretty much what you get from year to year. Last year, it was a sixty-four percent. The year before, that was sixty-eight percent. So it remained pretty steady. You have a very high confidence level, or I should say very low confidence level as far as the survey is concerned. We feel that we can confidently say that the responses that you see are within ninety-five percent accuracy, give or take about one and a half percent, which is extremely low. Standard tends to be five percent. Eighty-four percent of district employees said that they're proud to work for Waco ISD. This is five percent higher than it was last year. Seventy percent of district employees, or seventy percent of employees said they would recommend the district as a good place to work, and that's eight percent higher than it was last year. Seventy-six percent said that they would recommend their campus or department, a seven percent increase over last year. So these are very positive morale responses that you're looking at. And this will just give you an idea of what the trend has looked like over these last five years. You can see the jump, the positive jump in this year. That's the seven and eight percent. Eighty-nine percent said that they feel safe in the workplace, seven percent higher than last year. Seventy-eight percent said they feel secure in their jobs, eight percent higher than last year. And this is just to give you an idea that there, it's not really that much of a leap, but that eight percent jump is starting to give us a hint of a positive trend with, as feeling, the feeling of job security. Ninety-four percent, oops, ninety-four percent of the employees said that they like their job. And what you're looking at here is an average of a series of questions about job satisfaction and things that, and it's not much different from last year. It's only about an average of one percent higher than last year, so it's pretty steady. You've always had very positive ratings in this area. Eighty-seven percent like their coworkers. They feel they can depend on them. They feel loyal to their work group. They feel that they all work well together. Again, this is very similar to previous levels of satisfaction. Eighty-one percent said that they like their supervisor, again, very similar to previous responses. Now I said I would look a little bit more at pay. Fifty-eight percent feel that their pay is fair for the work that they do, which is two percent higher than last year. That's really not enough to say that there's been a change. It's really not significant enough. And to get a better look at that, that's where the numbers are. The positive news is that there is a trend that seems to be starting, beginning three years ago, as far as opinions about their pay. Sixty-seven percent believe that their pay is competitive with other districts in the area. Look at this from the standpoint that that's nearly seven of ten people. Pay tends to not get as high ratings because, well, I don't know about you, but I would like to make a little bit more money, and so would everybody else.
You're asking about if school board members?
I wasn't talking about in your job as a board member, but, you know, for the other job that pays, that allows you to be a board member. So, but what I want to point out is that this is really a very positive number that two-thirds of your employees feel that their pay is competitive with other districts in the area, even though they may not feel that they're getting paid for all the work that they do, or as many of them may not feel that that's the case. And you can take a look here, and it's steady. There has been no change from last year with that sixty-seven percent, but the numbers have been very, not much change year to year, but they certainly have not been declining. Communication has some good things, we have some good things to say about communication, but there aren't any great changes. The one thing I do want to point out is district recognition of employee accomplishments had a positive change with a six percent increase. Keep thinking I've got something else there. That's why I moved so far forward, but this is six percent higher than last year. District leadership, and the gap in there is because we did not survey the question in that particular year. I know that question's just been on the tip of your tongue. There is not much of a change from year to year in the last three years, but obviously a very positive trend. And when you look at the change in the last three years, it does increase by eight percent. So it's definitely something that I would call a trend. There's enough going on there. Campus environment, a lot of positive things happened in terms of campus environment. Eleven percent more said that they're proud of the performance of their campus. Nine percent more feel that their principal's effective in leading the campus to achieve its goals, and seven percent more feel that they get the information they need from campus leaders. So all of this, these are very positive responses. Curriculum and instruction, I broke these down into different categories because there's way too much to put on a slide. But just to point out some of these positive things, this increase this year in satisfaction that belief that the instructional program in the school enables students to master the curriculum, it has six percent more positive responses this year, and the level of satisfaction with teachers in their role in selecting instructional materials and resources also increased by seven percent this year. Again, some more positive responses in curriculum and instruction. The most notable one on this particular slide is satisfaction with the usefulness of staff development that they're receiving. That increased by eight percent. This also shows a change. These two questions were only asked in the last two years. That's why this slide just doesn't have much color to it. But you can clearly see that there is an eight percent increase from last year in satisfaction in terms of getting clear direction from their instructional support team. This is giving me a feeling like somebody set a goal and went after it because they tend to be in a lot of areas related to communication. Just a peek at student discipline, very positive responses this year. Things have, had kind of stayed steady, static for the last three years, and now you're seeing an eleven percent increase in satisfaction with the principal's leadership. Ten percent increase in satisfaction with enforcement of the code of conduct, and nine percent increase in support with disciplinary actions in the classroom. Ten percent, employees are invited to give comments on anything they wished, and ten percent of those employees that participated in the survey did offer comments. And that was actually a hundred and thirty-nine particular comments. Just to give you an idea of how they all sorted out compared to the previous years, one thing I want to point out here is on accolades. Accolades is at, it's in the first place for the first time, and it is the highest position since the two thousand twelve survey, which I think is exciting because this is, this is the most positive thing that comes out of the comments. These are compliments for coworkers, for their administrators, and for the superintendent, is primarily how it worked out. I also want to point out, and I don't have anything to mark it, but if you can see this, notice the student discipline. The pattern that it takes where it jumped out last year and dropped back this year, that is actually very complimentary to the data we looked at a little bit earlier on their comments. So it's kind of a reinforcement that the comments that you're receiving on student discipline are very consistent with the changes that are happening that are very measurable. You also did some customer service questions. One was in technology for the technology department. Eighty-five percent gave positive customer service ratings to technology, a very high number. These numbers were similar to two thousand fourteen. Ninety-two percent gave positive customer service ratings to human resources. There is very little change from year to year, but I want you to take a look at the actual results because there is clearly a trend, even though it only may be changing by a point or two each year, there's a very positive trend that has happened over that five-year period of time. It's really hard to get higher than the ninety percent range. It really truly is. Anybody have any questions?
Any questions? Ms. Pettis?
Yes, only sixty-five percent responded. Now, do you have any idea why only sixty-five percent?
Sixty-eight percent is a very high response rate. It's, I, national averages on surveys are around thirty, thirty-five percent response rate. Sixty-eight percent is very positive. We tend to see in the high sixties, low seventies for school districts about this size. Very small school districts will have a higher response rate because it's easy for the superintendent to get out and be a cheerleader and get everybody to take the survey. It's a lot harder with a district this size.
But do we get a better response this time?
It's a little bit higher. Last year, it was sixty-four percent, which is very, that's right in there where it's expected to be for a district your size. You've got four percent more of your employees responding to the survey. But again, four percent, that just could be, you know, that could be as simple as the time of day they took it, or, you know, who knows? Or the time of day they got the email. It's, it's there, it's within the margin of error that it's really not a significant difference from last year's response rate. But as I said, when you compare it to other districts your size, you're right there where you should be.
When you mentioned the eighty-five percent technology rating, Mr. Laredo gave a big old smile.
And it's a well-deserved smile.
Good job.
Two thoughts. Number one, thank you for doing this year after year. I mean, it is important information for the board to have, to get that feedback from the campuses and from the employees. And secondly, I agree with you. It's nice to see what had been, in a lot of various areas, trends going in the wrong direction, and seeing that almost universally reversed over the last twelve months is a good thing to see. And I'm glad you were able to bring that to our attention, and I'm glad there are folks who are, have increased satisfaction in their employment with Waco ISD. So thank you for bringing that to us. Other questions or comments? Have a safe trip.
Thank you very much.
All right, we'll move back up to the consent agenda. I have been asked to pull Items O, P, and Q. That's my understanding, no action will be taken on those, correct, Dr. Kane?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
And so I will entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda with the exception of Items O, P, and Q. Thank you, Ms. Pettis. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Murphy. All those in favor, say aye. Aye? All those opposed, the consent agenda is adopted. We'll go on to discussion of possible action, gifts and grants to Waco ISD. Dr. Kane?
Yes, sir. Mr. Atkins, Hillcrest Hospital donated an in-kind gift of twelve electrical hospital beds to the Greater Waco Advanced Healthcare Academy with a cash value of ten thousand eight hundred dollars. The beds will be used in healthcare labs to help prepare students for serving in clinical healthcare sites. The total amount in gifts, cash, items, and services received in the district for March two thousand fifteen was six thousand five hundred and seventeen dollars. The first quarters, January, February, and March of two thousand fifteen, total in gifts, cash, items, and services received for the district was seventy-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-one dollars and thirty-eight cents. And so the fiscal implication is that that would be an increase in the amount of gifts and donations. For grants, Region Twelve Educational Technology Foundation awarded four thousand eight hundred and eighty-one dollars to university high schools raising the bar for rocketry so as to provide students with hands-on opportunities to build rockets deductively and launch their simulated projects at exhibitions. So I'm recommending that the board accept these gifts and grants to Waco ISD.
Thank you, Dr. Kane. Any question regarding the Hillcrest gift or the Region Twelve grant? Any question regarding the Hillcrest gift or the Region 12 grant? All right, then I'll entertain a motion to accept both the gift and the grant. Thank you, Ms. Manning. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Sykes. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Please make sure that we extend our gratitude to Hillcrest because obviously, that Healthcare Academy is something exciting and getting the technology, including electric beds, which I don't even know what that is, but it sounds cool. I'm glad that we're having those, something for the students to be able to train on.
Well, and you know, as the board asked me at one of the workshops at Guama, we're hoping that once Guaca opens, that we'd have a workshop there as well, and maybe we can have a grand tour.
We'll move on to reports and discussion. Item A, we have another guest, Matthew Polk, who is the new Executive Director for Prosper Waco. It's going to provide the board sort of an update on recent developments with that initiative. As everybody knows, we are a supporter. I've served on the inaugural sort of formative board of that group for about 18 months. And those of you who have not heard Matthew speak about what's going on there and explain collective impact, this is your opportunity to get a little more background information. Matthew, welcome.
Thank you very much, Chairman, Board, Dr. Kane. My apologies, especially to Dr. Kane, who's heard me talk about this many times over the last few weeks.
No, no, no. I can't hear it enough. Like, music to my ears.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. I don't know, I'm unsure of the degree to which each of you feels kind of updated and informed about Prosper Waco as an initiative and where we are. So I wanted to just briefly talk a little bit about what Prosper Waco is, where we are, and where we're going, and I'd ask you to please interrupt me at any point with questions. Prosper Waco, as Chairman Atkins mentioned, is something that has been building over the last year or more under the leadership of the mayor and a number of community leaders as a way to pull together a number of initiatives within our community focused on not just education, but multiple quality of life issues in the community. So we've had approaches to education, to healthcare challenges in our community, and to issues related to poverty, employment, and job opportunities going on kind of separately. And under the mayor's leadership, there was a real push to kind of bring all of these under one umbrella and to look at holistically at quality of life issues for everyone living in the Waco community. And so that was the genesis of Prosper Waco. And after, you know, many months of discussion about how to do that and how to approach that, a board of individuals, including Chairman Atkins, formed Prosper Waco as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit with the goal to drive and initiate what's called a collective impact initiative in Waco. And so that's our role, is to facilitate a collective impact initiative within our community. So then the question is, what is a collective impact initiative? Collective impact is a new, exciting approach to addressing large-scale social challenges and opportunities in communities. And the idea is pretty basic. The idea is that individually, no organization, whether it's a city government, or a school district, or a nonprofit, or what have you, can address large-scale social challenges like poverty, like hunger, like educational outcomes, and so forth. It really takes a community of stakeholders working collectively to have an impact on these big-picture issues. And so there's a model for doing this. And it's not just as simple as folks kind of sitting down and saying, we all agree that X, Y, and Z are important. That's the first step, but that has to be done very intentionally and very strategically. And an agenda has to be built amongst a community of stakeholders about the specific things within the community that are important. And specific measurable goals have to be set around those items so that stakeholders across the community, across multiple sectors, businesses, and nonprofits, and government agencies, can sit down and think very strategically about what does it take for us to reach the goals that we've all agreed are important. So there's a big focus on, certainly on collaboration and consensus, but also on the use of data to identify very specific things that we want to do as a community and then work together to get there. And so, you know, I've been on board since January, and my role has been to get this ball rolling, to start the snowball rolling, so to speak, on this initiative in our community, building on a lot of work that's come before. In February, we had a public event at the Waco Convention Center where we introduced this idea of collective impact. About 450 community members were there to hear about that, learn about that, and to discuss how we might go about building an agenda and what we might prioritize. Springboarding off that, we have three steering committees, one in each of our focus areas of education, health, and financial security, of about 40 individuals broadly representative of the community. So in education, it's K-12 educators, it's folks who work in early childhood, post-secondary, or higher education, as well as just businessmen, community members who are interested in education and supporting education. So it's been the job of those steering committees to set specific priorities within each of those three areas. And they are well on their way to doing that. We have meetings over the next week, our second round of meetings with those committees. So once those clear measurable priorities are set, our next step is to build working groups around those specific issues. So to bring in people who are specialists in those areas, who are particularly focused on the specific things that we want to see done in the community, and then to work collaboratively to say, how do we need to align the resources in our community to really make a difference in these areas? And where are we missing resources? And where are we not doing things that need to be done for people in our community? Where do we need to put more resources? Where do we need to shift the way we use resources and kind of shift the way we do things? Where do we need to work together and those kinds of things? And so that's kind of our next step in the coming weeks, is to move into that phase. So let me give you an example, the specifics of what the Education Steering Committee on behalf of the community has set. Three specific things that they've identified as ways that the community can work with and for the school district to improve educational outcomes in the community. The first of those is school readiness. So how do we, as a community, align what we're doing in a way that ensures that families and students get the resources and the support they need so that when children at age four or age five in pre-K or kindergarten walk through the school door, ready to learn, ready to be successful? And that involves lots of things, from healthcare and organizations that work with parents and families, and childcare centers, and pre-K programs. That's very complex, but we think we have the resources to be able to make a difference. On the back end of the K-12 education process, it's post-secondary transition and completion. So how do we increase the number of students who graduate from Waco ISD and go on to not only transition to a post-secondary program, but complete a degree, a credential or a degree, that will help provide them economic opportunity in the future? And then in between, the third issue that the Steering Committee has set is parental engagement and involvement. So how do we, as a community, help encourage and inform parents and families about their role and responsibilities in their child's education, but also build a bridge so that they feel like there's the opportunity to engage in the educational process? And that's just not interacting with the schools, but that's kind of big picture. So those are the three things that the Education Committee has set. And we have to think about, how do we go about getting data related to those things? Especially school readiness is sometimes a difficult thing to target. But we've had good conversations with a number of educators in the area, including Dr. Conrad here at WISD, who I've recently begun communicating with, to think about, what does it mean for students to be school-ready? What do the schools want to see? And then how do we go out in the community and mobilize the community and resources in the community to help kids get there so that they're ready, ready to learn when they walk in the school? So that's a little bit about where we are and about where we're going. The next step is to take each of those three areas, to think about holistically, what are all the people and the organizations and the resources in the community that kind of deal with those things? And how do we get them together to work creatively and strategically to move the needle? And then how do we go out and get additional resources to target those areas? And where this has been done, this collective impact approach has been done in other communities, there's been a lot of success in bringing in more resources. Because when funders, when philanthropists and supporters see that a community is mobilizing and really focusing on particular things in their community, it's more compelling. It's more, there's more of a sense of this is something we want to support, that Waco as a community is focused on specific things, that they're, as a community, they're coming together to target specific challenges or opportunities, and that's something we want to support. So we really think that's one of the benefit, will be one of the benefits of this process.
Sir, you use that term, "school-ready."
Yes, sir.
Okay, will you be a little bit more in-depth about that? What specifically do you mean by being school-ready? Having them, what, getting them up in the morning, getting them to school?
Right. Well, what we're specifically talking about is being ready to learn at the age of four when they start pre-kindergarten, or five when they start kindergarten. So school readiness in the sense of early childhood experiences and development. And that's, I think, something that the local educators say is important, and it's something that the community sees as a way that the community can support the school district, by working with families and students from birth, really before birth, in terms of prenatal care, up to, you know, age three, four, five, so that students have the opportunities, educational opportunities, developmental opportunities, to be ready to be successful when they enroll.
So are we talking about a subject where I was talking about having pre-K, have kids, like say, at the age of four, get them orientated to go to school and know the basics because of the fact that if a kid walks into school at the age of six years old and can't read or even know some of his numbers, he's already behind?
That's right. And it's early literacy, it's early numeracy, it's communication language skills, it's social-emotional development, right? All these things play into being ready to be successful in pre-K.
What about parental involvement?
What specifically?
I mean, you know, like, say, how are you going to include parental involvement in this?
Right. So that's one of the things I want to be very clear about, is we want to be working, as a community initiative, we want to be working with and for the school district and not dictating to the school district how things should look. So the parental involvement, I think at this point, is the one that's least clear about how we approach. But that's, the point of the collective impact approach is to get together folks who do parental involvement, who do this thing on a regular basis across the community. That's not just educators, but that's community organizer, community development folks, that's other entities in the community that work with parents and families. And for them to think through collaboratively, what does that look like, and how do we do that more effectively? To have everybody focused on the same conversation, in a sense. So that's certainly not me answering all these questions, you know, that's...
Mr. President? Mr. Manning, if I could add a bit of clarity. So when I look at the strategic objectives, what I see as it relates to school preparedness or school readiness is the idea of cultivating a climate or an atmosphere within the nuclear family that is conducive to producing the types of students that we want from our institution. So if you just think of a clean room protocol, if you exit the clean room, you have to go through a set of protocols in order to come back into the clean room. So as educators and administrators, we have provided an atmosphere conducive towards that, however, unless the primary learning environment, the nuclear family, is equipped to deal with that, then our students end up falling between the cracks. So what we're looking at is a collective effort with the community to bolster our efforts, even within the families, and to enable and equip the families for the task.
Yeah, that's well said. Now, what I'm excited about is that the community, through the Steering Committee of Representatives, has said, you know, we want to approach things as a community that are kind of, what I think of as kind of wraparound services with the school district, which is, we want to support students and families before they get to school, we want to support them in terms of their interaction with the school district as they go, and we want to make sure they transition and go on to complete higher education opportunities. So I think that's a very, to me, a very realistic and doable agenda for a community to say, these are the things we want to provide to our students and our families and our community in a very specific kind of strategic way that will help the school district succeed. So one example, and then I know you have other things on your agenda. So one example of this is the recent grant from the Rappaport Foundation to fund Project Link, which is placing liaisons at University High, as well as La Vega High School, and then at MCC and TSTC. And these liaisons are guidance counselors in a sense, but their role is to build relationships with students and families specifically focused on transitioning to post-secondary opportunities, with a focus on MCC and TSTC for sure, our local opportunities. And we think that'll be a real benefit for the district and students in the district to have additional support and coaching and cheerleading for students who maybe wouldn't go on to post-secondary if they didn't have that, maybe just don't have the experience or they're first-generation students, whatever it is, but have, certainly have the ability and potential to go on and be successful, just need a little bit extra support and coaching. And that grant is a really ambitious, strong statement from the Rappaport Foundation of a community foundation wanting to support our students as they transition up. Our role as the grantee in that process is to really help provide oversight for the process, keep all those entities coordinated, which is part of the collective impact idea, and then to track the results and really see that we're getting results and we're really moving the needle. So that is that data focus, which is key to the collective impact process. So that's a little bit about where we are and where we're going. Any other questions?
Any other questions or comments from the board? If you'll pull the mic towards you.
I remember now. Let's see, Matthew's very ambitious plan, I think. I was excited to hear that, I think I heard you say there is an existing model that y'all possibly intend to replicate parts of, if not in whole?
Right.
Where, I'm, where's that? I assume that they've experienced some success, and I just...
Right. So there are various examples, and I can certainly send you plenty of reading material. There is a general, kind of, general generic model for how collective impact works that folks who kind of do work in this social development, social innovation area, who do thinking and writing on this, have put forward, that's being used consistently in lots of places. And I can send you several examples. There are a lot of examples of this being done in the education area specifically. One of the examples that gets lots of headlines is what's called the Strive Partnership out of the Greater Cincinnati area. So it's called a cradle-to-career collective impact initiative. So they're really looking at, many of the things that we're talking with, about, how do we, how do we work with families and students from, really from birth, to get them to productive careers? And how do we bring in community stakeholders, and businesses, and nonprofits, and the school district? And how do we work together to make that happen? And that's been replicated in multiple cities, so there's now a network of cities that are using that, that particular model. But this collective impact approach has been used around a number of issues, not just education. So what, it is very ambitious. Thanks to, thanks to our board and our mayor and our leadership, they've said, we want to use this approach not just with education, but with healthcare and financial security, and kind of looking holistically about the many challenges in the city and how they all kind of overlap. So yes, it's very ambitious. That's why it's, to me, exciting, an exciting thing to be involved in. And certainly, it's something that takes a lot of work and a lot of relationship building and a lot of very collaborative, purposeful conversation and work.
And Carrie, I want to follow up on that. Matthew can definitely send you a bunch of information. There's something called the Stanford Social Innovation Review, and it's, they've got a website, ssireview.org. And they've done a number of studies through Stanford University, and those are online, and it's a very, pretty good model of what the collective impact model looks like. And there's, and I guess FSG also has information on their website.
FSG.
But if you can go to FSG or the Stanford Social Innovation Review websites, those are two resources that we've used quite a bit in trying to put this thing together.
Yeah, one other question. Do we have, do you have a timeframe?
Yeah, so our timeline looks like this. By the end of May, our plan is for our steering committees to have articulated a very clear agenda of the specific things they want to work on and the specific goals we want to achieve, including numbers associated with those goals that we can track. And those three issues that I've focused on for education are the things that will come out of the Education Committee. Then summer into the fall, the plan is to pull together specific, again, working groups of people who are targeted in, around those specific goals, those specific issues. And that's not just getting a bunch of educators together, that's getting educators together with other service agencies, with nonprofits, with businesses, and thinking about, how do we, how do we attack this from multiple angles and collaborate and work together to make this happen? And then where do we need to go out and get more resources and do something new and implement a new program, potentially? And then late summer into the fall, I would expect very specific strategies or programs to come, ideas to come out of those working groups that then the community can support, either through kind of involvement, you know, volunteer is an involvement, it may be... It may be accessing some funding that the city has earmarked to support programs through this collective impact initiative, or it may be going out and, you know, writing grants and finding resources for what we want to do as a community. But I think when we get a wide range of community members together who are thinking about this from multiple angles, it becomes much more likely that the ideas that come out make sense, and are doable and achievable, and that there's kind of will and momentum behind them to make them happen. So, if you're looking for specific kind of implementable programs, the timeline would be kind of early fall. I see those kind of crystallizing and kind of being done. Does that make sense?
Other questions?
I'd just like to say, I'm a big fan personally. And on behalf of District Two, I want to say that I believe there's a few organizations within the city that have the ability to usher Waco into a new era. I believe you're one of them, and I applaud you and your efforts. And definitely make sure you talk to that lady, Ms. Harazad Perkins, before you leave.
And let me be clear, Prosper Waco is about the initiative as a whole. It's about a community initiative. So, my job, and my very small staff, our job is to facilitate this. It's really about a community effort. So, I appreciate the kind words, but I'm certainly not going to stand here and tell you that I'm personally a miracle worker. But I think collectively, we can make this happen.
Sykes?
Dr. Poe, your plate's full. We thank you for all that you're doing to get this moving forward in such a coherent, cohesive way, under your direction, as well as other city leaders. And I, for one, am looking forward to sometime maybe late fall, to hearing about the, all the aspects that you've described tonight, and how they are being moved forward, and certainly anything we can do to help. You know how to call us. So, but I very much appreciate it, and looking forward to hearing much more down the road as well.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Before Matthew sits down, I want to make the board aware of a couple of things. Number one, as he said, there are sort of five elements of successful collective impact initiatives that we've been able to identify. One of those is continuous communication with the various stakeholders. All of your email addresses have now been given to the Prosper Waco organization, and you should be getting continuous communication and email updates, kind of updating you on the status of the initiative and things as they continue to move forward.
If you're not, check your spam.
Right. And some of them are getting blocked. So, make sure, if you're not getting them, make sure and check, and get that as an approved address. Secondly, as he mentioned, there are three steering committees. For those of you who are interested in getting more involved with this, the Education Steering Committee meets again tomorrow at 11:30 over at Region 12, in the Mockingbird Room. And if any of you are interested in coming to that, although you've not signed up to be on the Steering Committee, we'll definitely be able to sneak in, we'll make that happen.
I'll give you my box lunch. That's okay. But you're very welcome.
We'd like to, if anybody wants to come over there, we'll get you over there. Last couple of thoughts, as he said, there are a lot of different wheels and initiatives that are being put into motion. If Prosper Waco does even a fraction of the things that have been identified by these steering committees, Waco ISD is probably the biggest beneficiary of all those initiatives. We get students who have better access to healthcare. We have students coming from families where perhaps there's more job security, and better workforce training. And in terms of the things that we deal with as a district, that we've said for years, there are just things we can't fix between the hours of eight and three. And for the first time since I've been on this board, the entire community and some major stakeholders have stepped up and said, "We want to help you address these issues. We see how intertwined they all are." And to that end, I would tell you that, under the education code, one of the things, as a board, that we're specifically supposed to do, and it is a shall, is we are required to establish working relationships with other public entities, to make effective use of community resources, and to serve the needs of the public school students in the community. I say that because, as Matthew's alluded to, there are a lot of things going on. A lot of this is a very engaged effort to facilitate discussions all across this community. But there's also a metric piece, which involves not only developing the metrics, but then tracking that information and communicating it back to the stakeholders, and the various folks to show we're making a meaningful difference. And all those things take money. And if we are going to be the major beneficiary of this, we need to join the city and the county in the financial commitment to do that. We've met with the business office. Everybody's comfortable under this provision, that it's not a gift of public funds, but rather it would be done through some inter-local agreement. And we'll be bringing that forward this summer, as we begin going through the budget process. But I want to make y'all aware, we don't get just the benefit of this. We are expected and have been asked to support it financially, and I think it's something, in the long run, will probably play bigger dividends than anything else we're working on as a board right now.
Money will spend.
And with that, you have anything else to add?
I've taken plenty of your time, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, we, item 11B is the presentation of the reading program for 2015, 16, and beyond. Dr. Kane?
Actually, we had presented this a couple of months ago, and the board had asked for some clarifications, for it to be streamlined, and to be more specific about what a stipend would be for improvement in reading. Ms. Ellis has done a very good job, in these three pages, of condensing it down. So, she's going to give a very brief presentation overview of the reading program.
That's great.
I'm not moving. The road is, the car is not...
We're going to be brief, even if we don't have...
Real brief.
The clouds are moving.
Oh, there we go.
Okay.
Excellent. There we go. Needs assessment. I'm just, once again, going to hit very briefly on this. I was told by this wonderful board, and our superintendent, Dr. Kane, to think outside the box. And as I put my group together, knowing that we now have eight-period day with our middle school and high school, and there are blessings on that, it made a few changes in what we had originally conceived with this. We know we have to have a balanced literacy program, which we've worked very diligently to put in for the last two years. We are monitoring more closely student progress than we ever had before on individual student basis and needs. We want to provide stronger campus support, and we want to continue to provide district support and trainings as teachers need them. Several things are currently in place, and they are listed there. As I've spoken to you about these things before, the Reading Academy wanted to, I just wanted to mention that briefly. It is not new information, but three times during the summer, we give teachers a two-day opportunity to come. And everything that's listed here, there's further training on, to help them go back over that, to become more comfortable with that. We will be having those academies again this summer. The North Waco Training Annex now is used weekly instead of monthly, and we have sessions going on two to three days a week at North Waco after school, for teachers to voluntarily come, create materials and supplies and what have you, and receive in-depth training where it is needed. The new for 1516, we're readjusting my department. We are now going to have a district reading coordinator, a person responsible to specifically look at the K-12 vertical alignment of our reading program, to make sure that we have cohesiveness between the elementary, middle, and high. We will have four reading coaches. We've had great success with our new teacher coaches, and helping new teachers. But what these people will be, will be, each will have approximately four schools, or one will have three. They will co-teach with teachers, new teachers, existing teachers. They will train, they'll be on the campuses daily. They'll work with the Campus IS, and they'll also work with my district reading coordinator downtown, as well as any of the core teachers. Those particular coaches will be housed on the campus. This is not additional administrative positions. This is a person that will be on a campus, who will then help take care of two or three more. They will, as I say, meet each Friday afternoon with the district reading coordinator, looking at the pacing guides, the data, planning ahead, so that what they are talking to teachers about is very specific to upcoming units, our areas of strength, and our areas of weakness that may need remediation. Campus planning, another piece of this is then, without an additional planning time, and being able to add additional FTEs for all campuses, what we came up with was a group of what we're calling our professional development team, who will be four substitutes, basically, who are highly qualified substitutes, who will go on to a campus for a day, and they will cover kindergarten classes for two hours, while those kindergarten teachers are able to meet with the district reading coordinator, the Campus IS, and really focus on planning, and the rigor, and understanding then more about what's being taught. Basically, professional development on their campus for their team. They'll then rotate two hours later to the first grade, and then on to the second grade, third, fourth, and fifth, and so on, as needed. Smaller campuses, which will depend on the number of teachers, on how many times that we're able to put that through in the course of the first semester. Our focus is on the first semester only. We will not be pulling teachers out in this rotation during the second semester, as we get closer and closer to that testing time. Which really put it in as September and October, a couple of hours, once a month, of planning intense on helping them to understand the rigor and what's expected with that. In addition to that, twice during the fall, we're going to have district-wide grade-level meetings. I can remember back, as I thought back about my 20-plus years in the classroom, the highlight of my time each year was being able to sit down with my fellow fifth-grade teachers, or my fellow eighth-grade teachers, depending on what I was teaching that year, and collaborate, and share ideas, and be able to brainstorm about what's coming up. This has happened prior and before in Waco, and the teachers were very excited about the possibility of getting together once again. We know our maximum load for substitutes a day, to be able to have a training for half-day was about 50, 55, which can be handled. And as principals know in advance about the dates, those are already on the schedule, for them to be able to then send teachers to that training, an hour block to be able to get them back to their campus, and switch to the afternoon group each time. So, this will be another opportunity in our elementary, since they will not be having that additional planning time during the day. Those days where we will be out with those plannings will precede the early release days that have been scheduled for September and October. Those early release days will focus on a specific agenda, on vertical planning within the school, within each campus, looking at what their lead-forward information and their data, and being able to be very prescriptive about where they're going, and their goal-setting, and looking at all of the things they need to. But this will also give us opportunity to blend together what those other trainings have shared with the teachers. We've got some specific district-wide expectations that all the principals know and will have in hand, and we've talked about it with them before. These are not new. 110 minutes minimum for K-2 classes in reading, and 90 minutes in three through five. This is one of the important issues behind the eight-period day, is the double-block situation at the middle school will give us opportunity to have that 80 to 85-minute period for our ELAR classes. Guided reading with that will be an expectation through all the reading classes, all the way through the ninth-grade classes. Guided reading there is that small group of students that work with a teacher on very specific needs, while other students are working on individual-type activities or group activities within the classroom. Again, Gretchen Barnaby is coming in. She's going to do two days of training. She's a national speaker, and she'll be coming in to us to train on grammar and writing. Instead of sending people out, we decided to just bring her in. The other thing that we're doing this year, we've had a tremendous amount of feedback on this from our teachers on summer, is $100 a day paying them to come to trainings outside their contracted time. We feel it's important, if they're going to be missing their families in the summertime, and they're going to be giving up their time, then they will receive $100 a day for that. Last but not least, the SMART program. I looked high and low for something that would help teach our teachers, particularly at middle school, where we see a drop in reading scores many times. How do we teach teachers to teach kids strategic memory and advanced reasoning? The SMART program is designed by a medical group, actually, of the Dallas-Fort Worth area, where they work specifically with challenged individuals, from whether it be stroke or brain injuries. They began to see the correlation between being able to teach strategies to those individuals and in the classroom. This training will be free of charge. We have private donors and a grant that's going to be taking care of the funds. Waco ISD was given to them, our name, to contact us, to offer the training for here. We will have 30, approximately 30 of our middle school and ninth-grade teachers attending this summer, and seven administrators. I'm very excited about this training, and what can come from that, and what the information that they bring back. And Ms. Ellis was able to, and her group came up with the Title I, moving Title I, Title II, and Stank Cop Ed monies around, so that the program she just described will be covered by those funds. And so, what we're asking is that we have a $1,000 stipend for each teacher who completes the Master Reading Teacher Certification. And that's my recommendation.
Okay, but we're not supposed to take any action tonight, correct?
No, we are.
I guess it's, no, it's not, it's just under reports and discussion.
I'm sorry?
She would say that ultimately wants us to adopt the stipend component of this, but are you asking, we're not supposed to take action on it tonight?
No, sir, no, sir. This is your first viewing of this. I wanted to get your feedback on it before we actually proposed it.
And if it's okay with her, then we'll put it on the consent agenda for May.
Any questions or comments, thoughts on the reading plan?
Mr. President.
Mr. Sykes?
Ms. Ellis. Plan, very comprehensive, very well articulated. Certainly appears out of the box. Congratulations, well, well done. My concern is one of implementation. All those elements, moving at one time, new, a lot of new professionals that will be involved with new positions, a lot of moving pieces, a lot of moving elements. How, with all those things going on with the implementation of the plan, how will you monitor progress to make sure? I mean, there's, it seems like there's a lot of checkpoints, checkboxes. How will the system accommodate, or the plan accommodate, progress points?
I appreciate you asking that. And it's one of the reasons why I insisted on a district reading coordinator, someone that would help me be my other part of the organization. And as you say, they will be meeting with those new people, meeting with the new coaches on a weekly basis, on Friday afternoons. The data component of that, and our progress monitoring, is already in place. It's just about learning more of it. All of our other pieces are already there and have been there this year. It's the amount of internal support that we're hoping to get to the campuses. So, I'm, you know, it's a strategic list, it's monitoring weekly, daily, you know, meeting with them, and making sure that what's going on needs to be going on.
Very aggressive, I applaud you. It seems like, I just don't, I hope we don't miss a step in that process of building the foundation and moving forward. So, thank you.
Other questions or comments?
I guess it's a process question to follow up on what Mr. Sykes said, because we do want it to be successfully implemented, and he stole my word. I had written down "comprehensive" as well, because it does appear to be very thorough.
I learned from you.
In terms of the development of this plan, I mean, was there input or feedback from classroom teachers and principals to ensure that all these moving parts are really something that we're capable of implementing within the structure of the class day?
Absolutely. We, QUDAC, we took it to QUDAC, and went over it with QUDAC, and asked for their feedback on it. We started with the needs assessment with QUDAC, on what do we need? And it was discussed there, and it was laid out there with them. The principals have been through it at least three times, at three separate principals' meetings. They've taken it back to their campuses, talked, sent in feedback. We have changed culled and worked around with it for about the last seven weeks.
Fantastic. Other questions or comments? I would like to thank you for taking time to clarify the stipend piece, and that it's not a master's degree, it's folks who go take the time to get this Master Reading Teacher Certification. And I think that's something that, there's not a slippery slope concern there, and I appreciate your taking the time, and either tweaking that or clarifying that, because I think that helps everybody involved. Other questions or comments? All right, thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. Last item is the preliminary STAR data for 2014-15. Dr. Kane?
Yes, that'll be, well, it says Ms. Weathorne. I think it's Ms. Ellis, but I see Ms. Weathorne coming up, so this may be a dual presentation. And if you will follow along, because.
I did provide you a copy of this, because the numbers have a tendency to get small, and we put all of them up. We did receive the state scores today, and that very first box that you see indicates the state comparison from fifth grade to fifth grade and then eighth grade to eighth grade. The state had a 2% increase overall in reading scores. Waco fifth grade had a 3% decline. Now, this is fifth grade to fifth grade, not the same students. This is just in the grade level. The state, eighth grade to eighth grade, had a 5% decline, and we had a 6% decline, grade to grade. But what I want you to pay attention to is the growth. If you will look at the next, the next slide is just a bar graph of that information. The third piece of information that you see, you have two different bar graphs on the page where it says eighth-grade cohort analysis. This is last year's eighth grade, or seventh graders, they only had one attempt at the test, to first administration of eighth grade. As you see there, between the first and the second bars, we had a 3% increase. Those kiddos had a 3% increase overall. I'm going to show you the specifics by campus in just a moment. But what I do want to pay attention to is that right-hand side of the grid, where you see the graph that shows basically the mean of the scores and how the bottom percentage number that was listed last year was at 34%. Our lowest indicator this year was 43%. That entire bar is moving upward as far as the accumulation of our scores. We have a tighter band within which they fall. Instead of the broad range from 34 to 92, we're now at 43 to 92. So we are moving that in the right direction. The next slide shows the 60% mark. Now, the standard did not change. In fifth grade and eighth grade reading, the same percentage of the test had to be passed. More children have to pass this year in order to meet standard. Last year, 55% of the kids had to pass 55% of the test. This year, 60% of the kids have to pass in order to meet that standard. And additionally, this year, the state is not looking at one, two, three, and four. It's one or two. So the two different indexes will be looked at. Index one, where it is the actual score that you see on the screen, but index two is the growth that you see from last year to this year of those students. So you can make it two different ways with that. You can hit the target at 60% with index one, or you can hit the growth measure in index two. You still have to have three and four.
That's probably what was intended. I mean, that's last year where they were requiring both.
Yes.
This is really a more fair way of saying.
Absolutely.
I mean, if you're at the very top, it's going hard to get that growth. This way, those folks who are making the significant progress can still pass under.
Yes, because that index two hurt many, including our district with that. Fifth grade, as you see, went from 58 to 59 overall. But again, look at the bar, if you would, to the right, and the mean, and how we have moved that up to where those scores have really increased. And if you look at the median scores between the two, we've gone from a 42, or excuse me, 52% to 64%, is that correct? My number.
Which one are you asking?
Yes, okay.
52 to 64. Yes, that's correct.
So what we're seeing is we're moving in the right direction with kids. Grade level to grade level, and we may still be challenged with that dipping down some, but what I'm more concerned about, quite honestly, is are our children performing better each year? And our information does show that. The next round of tests, and this, I did include the slide that shows the individual campuses for you and your handout as well, where you see that we have many above that bar already at 60%. Once again, they have another administration in which to get across that bar.
But just these two grade levels?
Yes, and that second administration will be on May the 12th. We are anticipating our raw test score data on May 20th for our third, fourth, sixth, and seventh grade. And English one and two data should be here on May the 15th. And then we have end-of-course exams that will be given the first week of May, and that information will be available by the end of May. We will not, however, know the full index until.
August.
August?
It'll be August.
And just so we're clear, because I know there's always confusion when we get all these scores in. On most of these tests, the scale score required of the student to pass is the same as it was last year. And so you'll be comparing apples to apples on the percentage, but the percentage of students who attain that score on an individual campus has gone up to meet standard.
5%. That's correct.
But if we're just looking at the percentage of kids who passed this year, we would be comparing apples to apples to look at the same grade level, different kids, but same grade level from last year.
Yes.
Okay. That's what I thought. Other questions or comments?
Mr. President.
Mr. Manning.
Looking at the test scores from several of these schools that are having some problems, what are we doing to help them?
On the schools that have the lowest scores, well, all the schools, not just the schools that have the lowest scores, but very specific tutorial plans, materials have been created to focus on specific teaks, specific areas of that test for remediation between now and May 12th, when they retake it. Everything, all the way from our third graders through our high school are involved in tutorials, even if they've not, they've just took the test this last week. Some of those kids came right back that day after school to tutorials, just simply because that's what the plan needs to be, to keep these kiddos up where they need to be.
Okay, and then the plan you have for 1516, will beef this up if that's what the goal is?
Lord willing, sir, we are doing our best to do just that, yes.
Keep in mind, too, that these are the first preliminary scores that came out. The students in five and eight have the opportunity to retest in May, and the results of that will also be incorporated into our accountability numbers.
Well, which one, which test will be the one that?
Reading. Well, it's this one plus the May one.
Both of them.
Because we take the ones who pass from this one. They don't get to retest. But if you did not pass, then you will take the test again. So we have an opportunity to add to that positive bar. Yes, sir.
Oh, okay, okay.
Other questions, comments? Ms. Ellis, I understand the importance of the cohort analysis. I also know, you know, when you look at that first slide, obviously, we know the percentage of fifth graders passing was less than last year.
Correct.
When we come back after we get the May, the remainder of the scores on May 20, and we get that report, I have no problem with the cohort analysis, but can we also see the grade-to-grade, fifth grade to fifth grade, numbers for each campus?
Absolutely.
For each of the tests? Because that's helpful for us to kind of get a big-picture snapshot of where the district as a whole is doing.
Absolutely.
And I think that's the number most folks look at, but I do appreciate.
I was waiting for that next, the next one.
Before we provide that. And I think that makes sense, because then we'll have all the numbers in. All right. Other questions or comments? Thank you, folks. Dr. Kane, I think we're down to announcements.
Thank you, Mr. President. Waco High, Waco High School's production of Tarzan the Musical that the community enjoyed back in January has been nominated for three Dallas Summer Musical Theater Awards this year. Best scenic design, best lighting design, and best costume design. The Dallas Summer Musical Award winners will be announced at a special gala next Wednesday, April 29. The cast and crew of Tarzan will be traveling to Dallas for this event. Congratulations and good luck. Waco High College Prep Day. Waco High School will host College Prep Day this Saturday, April 25th, from 9:00 a.m. until 1:00 p.m. The event is designed to assist Waco High college-bound seniors who will be graduating this June. Local colleges will assist students and parents with the financial aid process and provide college readiness workshops. Waco High College and Career Counselor Shontay Reed has been working diligently to prepare her students for post-secondary education. The Area 12 Special Olympics Spring Games will be this Saturday, April 25th, at Conley High School. Opening ceremonies begin at 9:00 a.m. Everyone is invited to come out and support our Waco Comets, as well as Special Olympic athletes from our neighboring districts. For those who've never attended a Special Olympics track and field meet, it is very heartwarming.
And I will add, I'm the public address announcer for the opening ceremonies and the parade.
All right. All the more reason to attend.
That's right. There you go. Just to come here, hear the public address announcer.
And finally, congratulations to the University Trojans softball team. For only the second time in school history, the Lady Trojans are heading to the state playoffs. With a victory earlier this week over Flugerville-Conley, University notched its first 20-win season. The Lady Trojans will close out the regular season tomorrow night against Waco High in a televised game featuring the dynamic voice of Waco ISD softball and baseball, Mr. Pat Atkins.
I wouldn't have mentioned the other voice if I knew you were going to do that.
I got a question.
Actually, we do have another announcement before we, did you have something you wanted to add?
Dr. Kane.
Yes, sir.
That little note you put in my ear, shall we discuss that, or should that be open?
Oh, go ahead and say it.
Okay.
Just say what you saw.
I know everyone probably don't have this book that we, that they gave us on the employee's opinion survey, but one of the interesting facts, if you get a chance to look at this, please go through and look at our two high schools, Waco High and University High School, and look at the progress and changes that's been done. Mr. Love is gone, and Dr. Shepherd is not here, but we need to acknowledge that both those gentlemen have raised the bar at both of the high schools, and this opinion survey supports that, so.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Mr. Murphy, there is a upcoming conference that you wanted to make the board aware of as well.
Yes, it's unfortunate that Mr. Love and Mr. Bishop is not here. I wanted to extend my most sincere gratitude to both of them. I'm a graduate of Waco High, so I'm a big fan of the district and a big fan of public schooling. They were critical in my development, and I say that just so that everyone can know that the impact that the community at large has upon a student, you can't measure it. And so I want to encourage the community. Also, I want to thank the Carver Park Neighborhood Association and their education board for what they're doing. I'd also like to bring up or introduce Ms. Harisad Perkins. She's doing some great things in District Two in terms of the youth conference that's coming up and how it prepares our young people in those three critical areas of school preparedness, post-secondary and secondary, as well as parental engagement. Ms. Perkins, would you be willing? Good evening to you. Appreciate you being here and all that you do for the district.
Good evening to the chairman, to the board members, and of course, to Dr. Kane. Surprised, I didn't realize I was going to get an opportunity to say hello to you all, and so, thank you for that. Mr. Murphy alludes to a conference that will be held May the 2nd at the Waco Convention Center. It will be our fourth, and it is made possible because Dr. Kane believed in us four years ago. We've done some really exciting things, including a business program that we initiated for the second time this year. The first year, we graduated eight students. This year, we graduated 93. I am so very proud of that. We started with the teen program, teen conference, four years ago and had about 300 students. Last year, we had over 800, and we expect to break 1,000 this year. And it's because you believed in us. It's also because the community stood by us and the parents of these children say this is meaningful, this is something we ought to do. Indeed, Mr. Murphy has captured it perfectly when he says we are after the total person. And it takes all of us to develop this total person in our teens. I hope I've captured it. If anybody is interested in joining hands with us, we know that it's a collaborative effort for the entire community. A gentleman spoke about that earlier, and I can't wait to take him to coffee. So if there are those of you who are very interested in joining hands with us to make this an exciting conference, we want you to do that. You can reach us on sibldi.org. We are a nonprofit organization focused on leadership development for teenagers. In every sense of the word, we're interested in developing the leadership potential of teens in our community.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any questions? Thank you for the opportunity to say hello.
All right. Any other announcements?
Yes, sir.
Then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Shall move.
Thank you, Ms. Sykes. Is there a second?
There's a second.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. All those in favor, we're adjourned.